All right. At this time, we're ready to call the meeting to order. We'll have an invocation and pledge.
Amen. All in heaven, we thank you today for the privilege of assembly here in the city of government. We pray that you would regulate our thoughts and our minds, that you would grant us its census in the things and the affairs of this city, that we might do those things that please you, and that are in the best interest of the citizens who live with us, as we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Stand with prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thank you all for coming. We appreciate you taking out your time to be here to take care of the business of the city. At this time, we have, we will have comments from the audience, and where it would be a limit of three minutes, there will be no direct interaction between them from the council, and they will go according to how they were handed to me. John Jenkins?
Councilman, Mayor and Councilman, I'm here as a concerned citizen, a voter, and a taxpayer, and what I'm wanting to ask is, is that we live in a society that's supposed to be governed by the people, for the people, but again, there's some questions that I have brought up, and everybody seems to think it's not my job, it's not my job when I ask the question to them about what, what, and how this is happening. There are certain rules here that are being broken, and we're ignoring them, and in some of the matters, as far as, you know, you on the agenda tonight, which again, it doesn't affect me in the matter of saying whatever, but just openly, but again, I'm a partaker of the grape. I'm, I'll admit to it, and I have dinner and whatever, but it comes down to the point is, is when it comes down to the point is, everybody can do whatever they want to, however they want to, for some reason, but yet it's restricted to certain people. So, I mean, you know, I'm making a mention tonight saying is that, that, you know, there's things going on, there's, there's an ad, legal notice in the paper, okay, that says about opening up another whatever, the beverage control, mixed liquor drink, or whatever. Okay, I have an ordinary deal in my hand from the Texas, from Houston County current liquor law, it's, it's not, it's not authorized, it's not available, so, I mean, you, where, where and who's advising these people to do what they're doing, but yet, we have another situation here that developed with the same thing, and everybody seems to ignore it. I mean, but what do we have laws for? I mean, you know, we're a community, we're a state, and then we have the, the US government, I mean, you know, as far as the government. So, I mean, but what are we here for? And, and my four years of service to the United States Air Force is, I feel that I did that to give you all the privilege and the right to do what you're doing, and also myself and my former, or my present chairman, or people in the, in the community. But, I mean, but what I'm asking you is, is can we get some of these rules that should be abided by, if they're the laws, you make the laws, so then again, in turn, you need to have them enforced. I do appreciate your time, and, you know, as far as the effort that's being done. And so, as a concerned citizen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Jenkins, for your service to our nation.
All right, thank you. Rose, I'm, I'm.
At this time, Gene Caldwell.
Mayor, Council. I would like to express an utmost concern with the behavior of one of our council members, which, like normal, is not here, Mr. Jones. It came to my attention about two weeks ago, while I was in here visiting with John Angerstein, about another matter that happened a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Jones took it upon himself to go outside while my wife was waiting on me to get through, so we could go home, and, and called her a very explicit name in front of the whole crowd, and there's multiple witnesses that heard this, seen it, and they even took it upon themselves to come in and tell the chief of police about this. And I went and visited with the mayor about it, and I felt like it was just kind of brushed off, very, very minute, no big deal, our public officials, it's cool for them to say stuff like that. So, that's kind of what I gathered out of it. We are, we have white privilege, is what I was told. So, with that being said, I am asking for Mr. Jones to resign his position as councilman tonight. He's probably watching on YouTube right now, anyway, so this is for you, Mr. Jones. You should have done that in front of me, is what you should have done, and then we would have handled this differently, but effectively, immediately, I want him to resign, and if he does not, then there will be filed charges against him tonight. And there is no excuse for this behavior to go on with our city government. It's so ignorant, you know, and this is a pure example of someone that's totally unqualified to be running our city. This guy makes nothing but wrong decisions for our city, and you all know it, you've all seen it, the entire town sees it, and we see this bad behavior from this guy ever since we've been here. Our ci, I live in his precinct, our city streets, he makes it a point to not take care of our part of the precinct. It is the biggest joke I've ever seen, our streets. And on another note, we're going to be looking into any city official that has had a part, that has had any kind of contact with a lawyer that is in this lawsuit against the city, because to me, if a city official has been involved in contacting this lawyer to get people involved, then...
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. It was a good man.
At this time, Diane Rome.
Well, I heard a statement one time which says, "If you see something, say something." Well, I'm saying that the last council meeting, I saw and heard for myself. Well, number one, council member Jones, for the second time, his word, his language was degrading. He said, "You council people, get off your butt and hire some firefighters." Hiring of the firefighters was not on the agenda. Chief Frisell was giving a monthly report, the mayor was very calm in explaining that to him, but it didn't, it just went over his head. Number two, with regard to the trash that comes from his mouth, he went out in front of the city building, stopped and called a citizen, a word that no one would stoop so low. There are signed statements to the accuracy of this, and no one deserves this type. Another issue was on item 10 last meeting, it said to have removed three board members for violation of the Open Meetings Act. That was it, period. The mayor done a good job explaining that, but Mr. Jones rudely interrupted her, and told her that the bylaws allowed them to do that, and that they had the right to. The bylaws was not on the agenda. We simply was talking about removing three board members. He goes on one step further and says, "Mr. Boland told you council members, you would need to get an attorney's." He said, "Well, now you're going to get some, you're being sued. Mr. Ivey, you're being sued too, and you asked, 'For what?'" This is my real concern. Why does he know all about the lawsuits, and yet, when you read the papers, and I've read the papers, he's not even included in the lawsuit? He just wants you all to be sued, okay? My question is, why is he involved in anything? We have a city attorney, and we don't need him telling everybody what's going on in the lawsuits. And I think with his knowledge and all the knowledge he has seemingly regarding those lawsuits, that he should resign from the court, from the council. He is possibly involved in abuse of official capacity. This is his opportunity to do what's right. Him inserting himself in these lawsuits, which he has, and he's still doing it, and I guarantee you, if you called him tonight, he'd be able to tell you what happened today. So, anyway, Mr. Jones, I know you're not here, and I didn't expect you would be, but you have completely gone out of hand, and that is what I have to say. I saw that and I heard it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have Carolyn Magnite.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Again, my name is Carolyn Magnite. I have been CEIDC Executive Assistant for over five years. I have done that job to the best of my ability. That job has been shut down for over seven months, and I just would like to know where I fit into equation. I have not done anything wrong, I've done my job good, as far as I'm concerned, I consider myself a valuable employee to CEIDC. So, I would just like to know something, it's just like my life is on hold of nothing that I have done, and I would just like for someone just to let me know where do I fit in the equation. And also, I was here for the prior meeting, and we got some new board members. The last I heard, we had a president, the mayor was nominated as president, so are we going to have two presidents? The three people that were put off the board, one of them was not the president, so I just want to know, could I know something about my job, and just what's going on with everything? So, that's my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At that time, those are all of the announcements that we have, was it, I mean, public comments. So, that moves us down to item number one, regular meeting, August 21st, 2023, approve of minutes. I think we got a lot of phone disturbance today. Everybody take a minute and check your phone, please.
I'll make the motion we approve the regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor. And by the way, we said keep your hands up a second, so that she can get an accurate opposed. Motion carries. Item number two, consider and approve an ordinance of the city of Crockett, Texas, amending Chapter 10, Garbage and Trash of the Crockett Code, and amending Section 10-29 rates to change the rates, providing a servability clause containing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date. Counsel?
Mayor and Council, this is after our budget workshop and adopting our budget for the fiscal year of 24. This is one item that was decided on by council at that time to increase the garbage rates to take on the additional cost to the city. There was a third, a 3% increase according to CPI from our contractor, that is allowed by contract. And with no other increases to be, to be had, it was decided to amend our ordinance for garbage rates to pass that cost on to our residents instead of raising taxes to cover it. Since we don't have, since we're not raising it to cover it, I have a breakdown of what those trash rates or garbage rates are. Current rate, for instance, is 2137 with a 3% increase, that's 64 cents a month per resident. And then, as you can see, just a breakdown of each of the charges that go through the city, as we're being charged, that we charge our residences to pass that on. And the ordinances that y'all have in there include that, all, each of the items of service.
And how much longer do we have on their contract?
November of 25 is the, is when it expires.
Okay. So, when we go out for bid again, and they come back with a lower bid, it's not, that's not going to look good for them.
Did they increase rates last, you got?
Yeah, it was 3%.
Did they increase rates last year?
Yes, there's last year, the first year that they entered into contract, after that, that first year, they did not increase it. By contract, they're allowed to do to a maximum of 3% or CPI. CPI, that, that clause was not enacted the first year, they came the second year and increased it by 6%. And so, last year, it was passed on at the 6%. This year, it's 3%.
Okay.
But this just gives a little bit of an idea how it'll impact. If you have an additional cart, for instance, if you have an additional cart, it goes from 570 a month to 587, so a 17 cent increase for each additional cart, and for the residential services, 64 cents. A commercial cart is 92 cents a month, and then a breakdown for the dumpsters is below.
But what they normally do is they'll go up every year, there's 3%. That's, that's when they went up that 6%, that's when I didn't like it, but they go up, and then when they rebid, then they'll come back down to what, so, when they come back down, it's going to be the problem.
Okay. Well, any other comments, discussion? Wish your pleasure? Do we get a motion?
To make this budget, we, we've already voted before, so I make the motion we pass it on this time.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, brings us to item number three, consider and approve appointment of representatives to serve on the Board of Directors for Deep East Texas Council of Governments.
Mayor, we get a one, we get one representative for our DECTCog region, each city and county. Last year, it was the mayor for a one-year term, and that's renewed each year unless council wants to nominate or elect someone else. But they're requesting next year's not, election and approval.
Wish your pleasure?
I make the motion we approve the appointment of the mayor.
I'll second it, motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, number four, award bid for bank depository service.
Mayor and Council, the Mayor and Council, we, we went out for a seal bid at the request of council. We're up for renewal for our bank depository services and payroll. We've, last time we renewed them without a, we enacted the renewal clause instead of going out for bid again. This year, it was requested that we go out for seal bid. We only received one seal bid from a banking institution, and that was Prosperity Bank. So, I'm requesting that we be able to move forward with our depository services with Prosperity Bank.
I made the motion award the bid to Prosperity Bank.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor? Motion carries. All right. Number five, award bid gasoline and diesel fuel.
Mayor and Council, we also went out for seal bid for our gasoline and diesel fuels for the city. As a, as a note, we spend in diesel and on-road, off-road, and gasoline, we spend, last year, it was an estimate of about $185,000 that we spend in fuel between trucks, fire trucks, and tractors, and mowers, and police vehicles. And so, it is pretty critical that we, we verify that we're getting the best price for it. That being said, we did go, we did go out for bid, and we received two seal bids. I do have, let's see, we went out for seal bids, and we received one from Crockett Pharma Fuel, who is our current provider, and we received one from Sun Coast also, and I have a breakdown here. The vendor of Crockett Pharma Fuel, basically, they pay, it's what is called a rack average, based on the amount that they, of the total amount of fuels that they bring into their facility, they average them out, and they pay a certain price. Well, that, they pass on to the customer. And then there's a, the, the portion that they tack on for their services, for providing transportation and selling us the fuel. Pharma Fuel, their bid was 40 cents for unleaded, 40 for ethanol, 20 cents for off-road diesel, and 40 cents for on-road diesel. Sun Coast Resources was .07 cents, so it was 7 cents, .73 for unleaded. Ethanol, they did not bid on ethanol, and then it was 11 cents for both off-road and on-road diesel. So, in looking at that, I broke it down into last year's total consumption, this is the amount of fuels that we, for the, for calendar year of 2022, so I could get a full year of consumption. Based on 33,982 gallons of gasoline bought, 11,808 of on-road, and off-road diesel is 8712, that works out to about a total cost of about $185,000 of what we spent for fuel. If you look at just the, the margin for the vendor, based on that same consumption, we would have paid Crockett Pharma Fuel right at 20,000, and Sun Coast would be almost 5,000. So, about a $15,000 difference is what, using last year's consumption, what we would be saving moving forward into next year's contract, if, if all, if all things held the same, trying to do it as best apples-to-apples comparison.
That's what I was just about to ask, so we comparing apples-to-apples in, with these two businesses?
So, that being said, we, after reviewing, after reviewing that, we do recommend continuing with Crockett Pharma Fuel for the purposes of, of the following. One, that is our local, local vendor, we are investing that money back into our, into our city. No, I did not do a, a calculation of what that sales tax would be, or anything, anything like that, but you can imagine there, you know, we're investing back into a local business. Secondly, Crockett Pharma Fuel provides services that before a hurricane or major storm event, will request top-off services, they'll come and fill up 1,000 gallons worth. Sun Coast said that they needed a minimum of 7,000 gallons before they would make a transport, which would be, for the most part, doable, except for these instances, is top-off services. Secondly, we have had a couple of occasions where our pumps have gone down in the middle of the night, before a mechanic can show up, the pump is not working, electricity issues, pump issues. We can go to Crockett Pharma Fuel and receive services directly on our account without being down, without a vendor. So, for a couple of those reasons, just, we feel that it's in the city's best interest that we continue with Crockett Pharma Fuel. We did reach out to a couple other vendors that we have received service from in the past, and we did not get any other bids.
I make the motion we go with Crockett Pharma Fuel.
Second.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor? Motion carries. All right, item number six, consider and approve an ordinance of the city of Crockett, Texas, amending Chapter 13, License and Business Regulations, Article 1, Section 13-1 of the Crockett Code, to provide extended hours for the sale of mixed beverages and malt beverages for on-premises consumption, providing a servability clause containing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date. Counsel?
Mayor and Council, this, this ordinance 13-1 also goes hand-in-hand with 13-2, to clean up our definitions, as it has not been addressed in quite some time. 13-1 primarily addresses hotels, which have also not been allowed by ordinance as a service to their, to their clients, and, and that goes with hotels, bed and breakfasts, others that provide that as a service to their clients. Does require, obviously, mixed beverage permits, as, as required by TABC. We do not, we do not have any oversight over beverage permits, certification, that's approved by the state, and also audited, audited by the state. Where we come into play is they look at our ordinance to be sure that it aligns with the, with the TABC rules and regulations, the statutory requirements. But this does allow a hotel also to, which is statutory, and ours did not address that, to provide mixed beverages to their clients.
Okay, so, for them to be in compliance, it actually comes from the state?
Correct.
They'll be certified, and they will actually be the ones that would monitor.
TABC.
So, let's, let's be clear about this, Mr. Angerstein, are you saying that they can't extend their hours longer than what it is because of the state requirements?
No, sir, the, in 13-2, which is the next agenda item, that's for the extended hours for clubs, and that, yes, sir, the state allows it if the city allows it, for the late hours, but that's, that's our next ordinance.
Okay, so we're just on number six at the time?
The 13-1.
And it's, and then, you know, that's for the license and business regulation?
For license and business regulations, and as it relates to historic buildings, there's lots of state TABC requirements that we did not include in our ordinance, and that's to clean that up, that we also align ourselves to TABC and state statutory requirements.
I make the motion we approve the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, it's in, excuse me, moved in second, all in favor? Did you see everybody? Opposed? Okay. All right, bring us to item number seven, consider and approve an ordinance of the city of Crockett, Texas, amending Chapter 13, License and Business Regulation, Article 1 of the Crockett Code to add Section 13-2, to provide extended hours for private clubs for the on-premise consumption of alcoholic beverages, providing a servability clause containing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date.
Mayor and Council, this is 13-2, that currently, our private club, our ordinance is where it talks about private clubs or sale or consumption of alcohol past midnight. It was not allowed. With this ordinance, it does allow it, but it also aligns itself with state statute and TABC requirements, that the, that they, that they now fall under TABC regulation of a private club or lounge. It's not really something that we, we enact by ordinance, but by ordinance, we pass this on under state statute. This is not something that we would, right? And so, this ordinance basically allows, if, if you are a private club with a, a private club registration... And so this ordinance basically allows, if, if you are a private club with a, a private club registration, that you can extend your hours to two o'clock. And this falls along the same lines of the other businesses that are currently operating, such as, or organizations such as Elks Lodge, American Legion, those that do provide alcohol to patrons, that you don't, you don't walk in and have to buy a meal and buy a singular drink each time it's provided as a, as a, if you're a client of that establishment with a private club lounge.
So the basic, but they, if they're a private club, they're already approved to have, to serve alcoholic beverages, right? So you have to already be approved, and this is just an extension of the approval?
This allows it to be up to two o'clock. I know the police chief had a few comments of councils.
Oh, good.
Now, the other businesses here, Credos and David Crockett Bar, those businesses, they are, do they come under a different?
They're not a private lounge, as a retailer or a restaurant or a, a bar, like Credor's or any other Fowler's, where you, you buy, buy the drink individually. It's treated under TABC. It's also regulated by TABC. And it's, it falls under TABC regulation as far as when they can close and can be open.
Chief?
I'll just add a few things. Mr. Angerstein pretty much covered everything that I had in mind, but I think both of these ordinances are beneficial to the city as it will align itself with the state law of TABC, which they'll also help monitor, make sure that the businesses stay in compliance, and which is ultimately what we would do as well. So I think both of these ordinances will be beneficial to the city and to all the businesses.
Well, if, I mean, just for future reference, if there appears to be a violation, who would they report it to? Would they, they wouldn't report it to the police to?
So yes, some of those violations we can handle on a local level, but we immediately report those to the state. There's also requirements in there that require these businesses, if they have any type of altercations or any type of incidents in their, in their establishment, that they have to report those within so many hours to the state. So there's several different breakdowns in, in the requirements in the state statute that they can be enforced locally or can also be enforced by the state administratively as well.
So you get double support, not only from the local but from the state?
Correct.
Chief, can I ask you something? As far as these other businesses at a late night, I would call them, as far as our law enforcement, is there any issues, major, that happens at that time of morning as they discharge from those places?
So obviously, the later you go, the more people drink. Some people that, that can't control that or are not cut off, they become intoxicated. They leave, they get out on our streets. But with some of these ordinances, it kind of helps control that because there's penalties for that for the business owner or for the owner of the establishment. So they're more likely to, to try to control their establishment and, and the alcohol that's, that's put out or to what's served to those particular patrons. So to answer your question, yes, the, the longer they're out, the later it is. Obviously, the more issues we see with drunk driving, physical altercation, stuff of that nature. But I think totality of it, it helps the businesses manage that much better because they know the penalties that, that could come with that.
So we do.
Thank you.
To clarify again, this is not block parties. This is not local residential things. These are strictly for professional, I mean.
For private clubs.
For private clubs.
That's correct.
Okay.
And we hope that this ordinance will also help on some of the block party or private events that are happening after hours because people are still not ready to go home, so they end up doing something off-site. And whereas if it's provided to them in a regulated environment, it.
Better control.
Has its pros and cons.
All right, I'll make a motion. We approve the ordinance.
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Let's take us to item number eight. Considering approved resolution for amendments for fiscal year 2023 Crockett Economic and Industrial Development Corporation budget.
Mayor, council, this is, these are the memos that were passed in our prior meeting, and I'm asking that council also pass it and record it into their minutes.
I'll make a motion. We approve the resolution.
Yeah, second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor? Motion carries. Item number nine. Considering approved 2023-2024 fiscal year budget for the Crockett Economic and Industrial Development Corporation.
This is next year's operating budget for the Economic Development Corporation, council?
I'll make a motion. We approve it.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor? Motion carries. Item number ten. Considering approved payment of invoices from Crockett Economic and Industrial Development Corporation.
I'll make a motion. We approve the payments.
That's second in motion.
It's been moved in second. All in favor? Motion, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, item number eleven. Discuss, discussion regarding fire engine and ladder truck and authorizing fire chief to seek proposals. Chief?
All right, Jason. Our ladder truck is currently on a service for its intended purpose. It was tested on August twenty-eighth, and I believe I sent everybody a copy of the, the report, which was fifty-five, fifty-six pages, so I emailed it to you versus printing it out to save some trees. A lot of that, I've been working with the mechanics with E-one to try to get an estimate of what it's going to cost to bring it to, so it'll pass. As of Friday, they didn't have me a concrete paper report to give to you, but he said he was up to a hundred thousand dollars on the repairs, just to fix what's in the report. I've also talked, talked to him about a refurbishment. I think that I mentioned that in my five-year plan, was to get that truck refurbished. Refurbished until they actually come here and actually look at it and go over everything that we want refurbished, which basically is a frame-off refurbishment. They check all the wells, they redo all the cylinders and all that. He gave me a high number. He said anywhere from six to seven hundred thousand to have it refurbished, but until they actually look at it and see what needs to be done to bring it back in certification. It would, it would service another twenty, twenty-three years. We've currently got twenty-three years on of it now. But this truck is very important to us, as y'all well know. We, there was an electrical incident on the square we used it on to get the guy off the lift. We used it several times in the last six months at one of the yard, wood yards, to extinguish their fires. So this is a very important truck to us, but I just wanted to bring it to y'all. Do we want to spend a hundred thousand now to fix it, and next year might be something else come wrong? Or do we want to sit, let me go out and search and see how much it costs a hundred percent to have it refurbished and look into having it for another twenty years?
How, how long has this equipment been serving us now, Jason?
It's been in service for twenty-three years.
Here?
Yes, sir. We got it in two thousand. And this happened, I'm going to be the one here to, when it needs to be refurbished or to replace that same truck. He gave me a hard number today, and it's one point three million dollars to replace that truck brand-new. So I would think it would be feasible to have it refurbished. It cost us five hundred thousand when we got it back in two thousand, and we can potentially get, you know, four years on the truck. So I think it would be taxpayer money well spent if we look into, if y'all allow me to look into getting it refurbished, not just patching it now and what's going to break in the next couple of years. In that report, there were several welds and the cables that actually lift the ladder up that's starting to fray, and I cannot put nobody on that ladder to do life-saving techniques until all that stuff is fixed. So it's not a normal budgetary item I can plan for, and it definitely won't, I can't get it fixed in my budget. So that's why I'm here looking, looking to see how y'all would like for me to proceed on getting this fixed or.
So just for clarity, it, it costs, you want to go completely through the unit?
Yes, basically, they take, they, they call it a frame-off. That's where they repaint it, they go through the transmission, you go through the motor. And the good thing about this truck is pre-deaf. You know, all the new trucks we got, we're all having trouble with the deaf system, and this is pre-deaf. So it don't have to come up to compliance with that. We can still use the same motor and transmission that's currently in it. They go to the rear end, rebuild the cylinders, and those cylinders, there's two that lift and two that we use to, to brace the truck, and those have got to be rebuilt every five years. And we're getting up to probably the next two years, two to three years to rebuild those cylinders. They're about four thousand dollars for a set, and there's two sets on there. So in the next couple of years, we're going to spend another plus of twenty, well, not twenty thousand, ten thousand dollars to fix the cylinders, which is by NFA compliant, we got to do every five years anyway.
So is there a possibility of refurbishing, getting twenty years out of it?
And still the cylinders, by NFA standard, we got to rebuild the cylinders every five years. But if we rebuild what we currently have, I'm looking at, it's not going to be a first-down engine. It was for the fourteen years of its, of its life here, was a first-down engine. This would be more of a special call-out or a third-down engine, and then we potentially get another twenty years, twenty, twenty-five years out of it, is what I'm looking at.
Is.
Without further, you know, research and investing, you know, what, what was the refurbishing? What was the price on that?
The price, he, he gave me the high side because he didn't want, he says six to seven hundred thousand to have it refurbished, but he said he can't say a hundred percent, give me an estimate until he comes down here and actually look at the truck.
And a new list, right?
A brand-new one is one point.
One point three million.
Okay. So, so, so it, it, it makes sense to me in, in that, seeing where we are right now as a city and the growth that we're having and, and, and all that's going on to those who are awake as to what's happening in our city. There are many things happening. We understand that. But I think that that piece of equipment is going to be on the more, in greater demand, so it's more prudent for us to, at least in my estimation, to go ahead and refurbish it completely. And then it'll be there to serve as we grow. We don't have to be concerned about broken-down equipment when we, anyone gets a, a house fire or any other fire for that matter. So that's, that's just from precinct three myself, so.
Looking at it in that, those terms, that's about thirty thousand a year.
I would like to give you some research. Is E-one the only person that can do that?
No, well, they're, good question. I'm not going to.
Can you find that out?
I can find that out.
I mean.
Yeah.
For sure.
E-one is going to be high.
Pierce is even higher now.
So maybe find, there's, there's got to be people out there that does the same kind of work.
Guaranteed.
That's, that would be just graceful to take it on.
That's what, I just come to get y'all guys, see where y'all want me to handle it. Do you think to a restoration or?
I would like to rest, right?
Do a refurbish.
Refurbish, but maybe find somebody that, that will.
I'll find that, that question, and I'm not sure if somebody would, but that's a good question.
I mean, there's, there's got, there's people out there to do it. So, I mean, yeah, we need the truck, no doubt. We need it.
Now, I will, I will caution one thing, that as you go out looking, cheaper is not always better.
I agree.
Now, if we're going to invest this type of money of citizens, that we want to get the best that we can so that if, if we send it out to be refurbished, that it's money, good money spent in a good way. You may find a better deal somewhere, but be cautious.
Reviews.
So what we're proposing now is for you to go out and seek proposals. That's, I think that's what, what it is for, for refurbish. Okay, can we get them?
I'll make a motion that we give the chief a leeway to go research that and continue to.
Seek proposals?
Yes, seek the proposal.
And I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Still have that same item we have?
And then we.
One more discussion topic?
Yeah, stay there.
It's like when I come, I come with my hand down. Also, during the budget workshop, we was looking into replacing our thirty-year-old engine. At this time, I've only gotten one bid back, which is from E-one, which is on a government pricing. Less than a year ago, we applied for a grant, and the truck cost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we didn't get the grant, so I asked him to re, redo it for a budget workshop, and it was nine hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So I was like, no, we, we can't afford it. What, what can we do? And he said, well, there's some demos that's in line to be built. He said, we could get you at probably the halfway mark between them, and he came back with a eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar quote for a new engine. I'm still waiting for a couple, a couple of companies to get back with me to get better pricing or, you know, Pierce is, they tell me we're looking over nine hundred thousand easy. It's going to take them six to eight weeks to get me a quote. They're just that far behind. So I'm just bringing that to y'all's attention now. Y'all told me to do a little research. I have reached out, but not everybody's gotten back with me. Metro and Pierce actually gave me a hard paper, so I'm just letting you all know I'm working on that also. On a new engine to, or to replace that thirty-year-old engine we have.
Do we need to restate that motion?
I have another motion on the same item.
Okay, yeah, well.
Or is, or the motion can be made if y'all want to.
I probably need to amend that because I, I, we didn't separate the fire engine and the ladder truck. Can we get, I mean, it's, it was with the same, he was talking about the same, but he was going to seek proposals on both, and I think we just addressed the ladder truck instead of the fire engine. So can we get an amendment? If someone amend?
If you want to amend your motion to include seeking proposals for the fire engine as well.
Well, I amend my, my motion to include the fire engine as well.
Okay, you have to fully restate it.
Just a, a second.
Can we get a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Happy honey. Okay, item number twelve. Discussion regarding, regarding police vehicle fleet and authorizing police chief to seek proposals.
Mayor, council, city administrator?
Chief.
So we talked back around budget time about adding two more police vehicles to the three that we purchased back in February. Just an update on those three vehicles. We still have not received them. We've got two that are in production right now. We expect, should come out around the middle of this month. And that third vehicle still hasn't hit the, hit the lot yet, so they're pretty backordered on vehicles. Just over the last two weeks, just to give you an idea of where our current fleet is at, we've had a lot of issues. We've spent more time in the shop than we have out on the street. We've got one particular unit that in a fourteen-day period drove two hundred and fifty-two hours. That's a little over eighteen hours a day. So the vehicles that we do have running are not getting much rest, which is putting more wear and tear on them. So I would like y'all's blessing to go back and seek proposals for two more, like we talked about in budget. We did find out that purchasing the vehicles outright, and the equipment for the vehicles individually, and the graphics, and have that done in-house by our city mechanic, which is more than capable of doing, will save us about twelve to thirteen thousand dollars per unit instead of having the current upfitter do the work. As I said, I've talked with our city mechanic, the head mechanic, multiple times about it. He's very capable of doing it. He services a lot of our equipment now. So again, I would like permission to, to seek some hard numbers for Mr. Angerstein, and that way we can bring that back before y'all. and that way we can bring that back before y'all.
Counsel. What's your pleasure?
I made the motion to authorize the chief to seek proposals.
A second motion.
Okay, it's been moved and second all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it brings us to item number thirteen. Discuss, discussion and approval of extension and installation of water and sewer lines for residential subdivision.
Mayor and council, I have a quick presentation along with Mr. Eldon Monk here. We wanted to run this. We have to, in, in order to proceed any further, we wanted to run this by council and give y'all an update on what is being proposed by Mr. Eldon. Something that we feel like we currently do not have in our city. And I feel like the nature of it is, is important enough that the city also look at going out and partnering with Mr. Eldon on this to be sure that that's something that our city does bring in. I feel like after he makes this presentation to council, then you'll, you'll get an idea of what opportunities we're probably missing out on as far as the future direction of our city. So, Mr. Eldon, if you don't mind passing those out and.
Madam Mayor, city council members, citizens of Crockett, thank you so much for having me and allowing me to address, address you this evening and, and talk about this, this project. As you can see on the, on the screen, we're calling this project The Lakes. It's a bit of a misnomer, it's actually gonna be one lake and one pond. But lakes has a better ring to it than a lake and a pond, so that's why we're going with lakes, okay? My wife and I are not current residents of Crockett, but we own property here and have owned other properties here in the past also. This project is on the, the very northern part of Loop 304, outside and adjacent to the loop. It runs from, if you're familiar with the area, it runs from, it, it adjoins Consolidated Water on the southeast and goes within three hundred feet of, of Highway nineteen. It has thirty-four hundred linear feet of frontage on Loop 304. And so it is an awesome location and the topography is, is, is perfect for doing what we wanna do too. We are anticipating doing roughly two different types of, of lots and types of residences in this, in this project. First of all, you're gonna see in the green on the left-hand side, it says classic country lots. Those will be like about a third to a half of an acre. Estate lots in the orange in the center, those will be about a half to one acre, that's what's being proposed. And there will be about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty lots all total. And, and when this project is completely built out, we anticipate houses in the area here going for, being built and selling for between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars. And because they're gonna be sizable houses, they're gonna be eighteen hundred minimum on the classic country lots and twenty-five hundred square foot minimum on the estate lots. So we think that, think that's very reasonable. When this project is completely built out, it will have a total property value of somewhere between fifty-five and seventy million dollars. That is property value and Mr. Angerstein can tell you what portion of that actually ends up being taxed. I think it's somewhere around eighty percent. But this is a significant tax boost to the city and the county and the school district potentially. We are proposing city water and, and city sanitary sewer. We're proposing and I think Mr. Angerstein's gonna talk about this later, where the, where the current utilities are. But they need to be extended so that, so that the properties and the residences can be serviced. We're also intending on doing underground electrical service. And the streets will, the entrance will be concrete or it will be paving stones. And the cul-de-sacs will be the same, any intersections, and there's one in there that will be either stone or concrete. And everything else will be open ditches and asphalt and concrete. The entry, we anticipate the entry being gated with, again, with the concrete brick paper streets. It, it will be an escalator, it'll have an, a, it'll have two lanes in and two lanes out, separated by trees and bushes and lush landscaping in, in between them. When you enter the property, and if we can go to the, back to the map again that shows the. There we go. When you enter the property, there'll be one way in and one way out. This is the entrance off of Loop 304. You'll come in here and then tracks will go both directions. Green doesn't make a green, a green space area. So there's one here, one here, a park over here by the pond and another green space here. This is going to be a four, five, six, seven acre, we don't know yet, probably between five and seven acre length. So if you can picture this when you come in from the, off of Loop 304, what you're gonna see is you're gonna see green space looking across the lake to another green space, looking at houses that are backing up to the lake. So that's what you're gonna see when you come in. The, the, the lake, like I said, will be probably five to seven acres. It'll be a catch and release lake. The, the pond is existing, it's about one acre in size and it will stay. And I just mentioned there will be a, a, a children's park adjacent to that pond as well as other green spaces in the area. There will be about, on the classic country lots, there'll be about thirty or forty of those in the green. And on the estate lots, excuse me, there'll be about ninety or a hundred and ten of those. We don't know exactly the size yet. A lot of this is gonna be determined by how expensive this really is to be built and what we can get for the, for the lots. I'm not a builder. I, my wife and I are just planning on developing this, putting in the infrastructure and then selling the lots and allowing people who buy the lots to choose their own builder. We think that's best because it keeps it from looking like a bunch of track, excuse me, a bunch of tract houses there. Be all individualized houses and people have a choice of, of builders that they want to do, want to use. The classic country lots in the green, you'll notice that some of them, the, the heavy blue squiggly line kind of on the bottom left-hand corner, that's Spring Creek, so some of those lots will back up to Spring Creek. On the other side of the road, on the north side of that road, where you see the field that's out there, that actually is owned by a gentleman and he actually has, yes, thank you. He actually has exotic animals in there. So whoever buys the lots on that side will actually be looking at, I don't know, zebras, antelopes, lions, tigers and bears, I guess. I don't know what's gonna be out there, but whatever it is, okay? On the estate lots, the lots that are next to Loop one oh, uh, three oh four, sorry, will actually back up to Loop 304 and they will look out across the lake on the other side of the street. There will be where it actually says estate lots there, those houses will actually back up to the lake. And then there, the very outer ring in the orange will be lots that back up to, on the north side again, back up to the, to the high game fence and the exotic animals. And on the right side is a, and the east side is ranch view lots. All right, what else? So let me just say this and then I'll let Mr. Angerstein tell you what he wants you to hear. When we, I first started talking to Mr. Angerstein about this back in March. And the reason is because there are, there are utilities on either end of this property, but there are no utilities along Loop 304 except for electricity. So there's no water and there's no sewer. So our initial conversation was what can we do about utilities? And he's gonna talk about that in a minute. That's what brought all of this together. When we started talking, and I told him what I really wanted to do here, and I didn't, we didn't buy this property with the intention of doing this, I'll be honest with you. We thought we would either just turn around and sell it or we would maybe divide it. It's actually zoned, what is it, Mr. Angerstein?
It's part manufacturing and part agriculture residential.
Yeah, mostly manufacturing, there's just a little part up in the corner that's residential, I think. So, so we thought that was what was gonna happen. But Mr. Angerstein was very supportive of the idea of doing a residential subdivision there. I think there's something that's really interesting that happened is early on, we had a meeting with Mr. Angerstein, with your city engineer, Bob Thurber of KSM. And Bob said something that was really kind of interesting to me. He said, not only is there not anything like this in Crockett, there's not anything like this for by cameras around Crockett. And so we think that this is a big draw. And the marketing that we're looking for, obviously we'd love to sell as many of these lots to local people as we possibly can. But we also think that there's another draw. And first of all, Mr. Angerstein's working hard to have other businesses and industrial companies coming in. And we think that these lots are prime for the, for the executives of those companies. That's about twenty percent, local residents maybe twenty percent. And then the other sixty percent, we really think that there's a market to draw people, primarily retirees, out of Houston and Dallas. Houston's an hour and forty-five minutes away, Dallas is two hours and fifteen minutes away. There are a lot of people that live there that don't wanna live there anymore. They'd rather live in Crockett or someplace like Crockett, but they don't have a, they don't have a neighborhood that's similar to what they've been used to living in. So that's one of the reasons we're taking this approach is to try and, and draw them out also. Okay, I think I'm gonna stop there. I will stay around and if anybody has any questions or comments later, I will be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, mayor and council, we, in looking at this, speaking with some of our local real estate agents, we did reach out, just trying to see what that market would look like, both for lots and/or if they were developed to be, to become a four hundred to six hundred thousand dollar estate lot. What do we think that market, you know, infield would be with that? It's almost like church business, it's not a win if we're just, you're, you have somebody leave one church, move to another church, remove one organization and go to another organization, that's not growing. Bringing in outside people into our community is what we need to be both through industry and if we're, if, you know, if we're focused solely on industry and that does not play out as fast as we need to, to, to grow as a city, we need to be looking at tourism, we need to be looking at growing as a retirement community, whatever it be. We need new people spending new money in our community, so they're not going elsewhere. And we currently do not have, we don't have available properties and houses and infrastructure developed to attract that type of customer, that, that new person that we want to move into our community. The ones that, in speaking with our local realtors, the ones that are moving in the current market are less, less on the side of, of low income or affordable housing. Right now, people just really can't afford to go to the bank and, and pull out a note on eight percent interest, you know, for thirty, twenty and thirty years. So everybody's kinda, the market that's moving is cash buyers that are selling and retiring from their bedroom community in Houston, Dallas, in those areas that, and they're selling houses for cash at incredibly margins that are a whole lot more than what we would be selling these properties for. And that's where they can look, you know what, maybe now I can't afford to retire. I sold my house, I can build my nest egg, I can still buy a really nice house in a community that's, has more affordable living and have a nest egg to, to live their own. And so in, in talking to them, that we feel like for anything to move, just us increasing our affordable housing and building low income housing, that's not, we have plenty of those. We need some people that are willing to come in and support our local retail, support all the new businesses that are open, that shoe store that's open, we need people to come in that's willing to spend money on local shoes, you know? And so I feel like it's something that it's worthwhile, that it was worthwhile enough. Speaking with Mr. Eldon, he didn't wanna talk about it too much, you know, but he, at this point, if we're going to sell those lots at a reasonable enough cost, if the infrastructure costs too much to develop those lots and those lots have to sell for too high, you don't, once again, you end up with a vacant piece of land because you had to upprice them enough to get your investment back. So having somebody willing to make that investment for the biggest, take, take the lion's share of this cost. If council is willing to look at, there's not a lot of other economic development maneuvers or projects for residential development like there is for business development. So we don't have access to a lot of those tools. And I think it's worthwhile that council just look at this and, and, and let, let me know if they are willing to commit. I do have some numbers, it's just some, some rough numbers. Did you have something?
Oh yeah, I was just gonna mention that the development of the sewer and water, what it would do for the city as a whole, because that's one section that's not even connected for us. Even if someone wanted to go out, it was gonna eventually have to be developed to make our use, the whole, the loop serviceable in that area. And that has been a problem. I think one of the advantages that was mentioned was that he would allow us to do a portion, that he would pick up a portion and we would pick, pick up a portion. Either way, the city eventually is gonna have to put in that, that water line in the sewer just to make that area serviceable.
I don't know what we have to do, but whatever we have to do, we need this. We need to look at whatever we need to do to make this happen.
And, and. I, I agree. And, and then if I heard Mr. Monk correctly there, it winds up maybe being like a seventy, seventy million dollar evaluation of the, that's quite a bit of, of tax revenue. Not, not counting, not counting just the, what the utilities through the course of the years would bring in to the city as well.
I think, I think we figured that it would be like one point two five million dollars per year if it's completely built out.
Completely built out?
Per year in taxes that were coming in to the city and the county and the school district all in three of those. And that's a, that's a big chunk.
Yes.
And, and looking at just our local, I did a, I did a quick, just a high level impact and that's just based on the ad valorem tax and the revenue for utilities. And I based it on a few of our local averages. These would be homes that would be sprinkled and possibly have a swimming pool. There'd be a lot of different variances that could increase that, but just using a basic average. Where he has to make his numbers work is how much overall investment cost am I gonna have to put in there? And then divide it by the total number that we decide. Is it gonna be seventy-four lots of bigger estates? That's gonna require them to sell the lots higher. Do I have that market if I? If I don't have that market, I need to reduce the size so I can sell them cheaper and more of them to still get my same money back. Cause ultimately, he's putting the same, roughly the same amount of money in. Um, so what is that market? What does it need to look like? I did it based on his, on two numbers. One was the, the larger one-acre estates and the smaller half-acre estate, uh, layout. Um, annual utility revenue, based on averages, a hundred and fifty-five thousand of additional revenue to the city. Uh, the avalorum tax revenue just for the city's portion, not, like you mentioned, the local economy, the, the school and the, and the county, but just for the city of Crockett, it'd be roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of tax revenue. So at a high level, the two bigs, revenue in an avalorum taxes and, uh, utilities, those are what we could look at when this place is fully developed. This place is not gonna develop all at once in one year. Um, you know, so that is a fully developed, you know, uh, revenue, um, expectation. Um, and actually for us, we are seeing about the same amount of revenue, the, the smaller the lots, the less it is, but the more lots there are available.
But another thing we're not talking about too is, uh, you know, the old, uh, statistic is a dollar turns over seven times in a community. So if, if, if the population of this, uh, uh, development is just say, uh, you know, a hundred, if it, well, just say it's fifty people. You know, fifty people, but each one spends a, I mean, you, e- each, uh, if, if it's just an average of a hundred dollars a week, which to make the math, uh, you know, uh, per person, that's five thousand and times seven, that's, that's, uh, that's thirty-five thousand dollars. I mean, that's just on a low end of new money in our community.
Yeah.
I mean, that's very low end.
Currently, the way our, um, our ordinances are structured and, and what we have been... sun shining bright?
Yeah, sun's coming back in again.
And, and the way we, um, we haven't really, according to ordinances, our hands are fairly tied as far as, like I said, it's, this is not a business, this is not a business project coming in that we spend EDC funds on. How can we partner as best as possible within our means and, and within our legal means and financial means? Are we able to and what are we able to do? Those are decisions that council needs to be ma- making, but, um, if we were to adopt, um, which is, uh, chapter two twelve of the, uh, of the tax code, we as a, as a local government, we can, we can support a residential subdivision development by up to thirty percent of public improvements. And those are city, uh, streets, sidewalks, water, sewer, um, not digging the lake necessarily or other items, but public, um, infrastructure improvements. The city can share the cost of up to thirty percent if we have the funding, if we have the finances for it. And those will have, be answers that council needs to make. We need to amend our ordinances to allow this to happen and we need to allocate revenue or, or funding for this. Based on the utility construction costs, according to his engineering, at one point two million at thirty percent, we're looking at three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of a, of a cost share if we were to do the full thirty percent match. Total construction cost just for the public improvement side, not the engineering, not the other costs, but the public improvements were, uh, two point six million, so you're looking at about, up to eight, eight hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand of city shared, um, for those public improvements.
And that's on the seventy-four lots?
That's on the seventy-four lots.
And with a hundred and twenty lots, a hundred and fifty, you know, not, not stupid.
The, uh, if increased to two, a hundred and twenty lots, it'd be an additional two hundred and two thousand, so it's an additional sixty thousand of cost share. Well, just gives you an idea, if we were to say do eight hundred thousand, uh, potentially when it was, when it's fully developed, you're looking at regaining that in the, in two years. Um, but the question is projection. You know, how long is it gonna take to fill this in? It's in his best interest and the city's best interest that it be filled quickly, but-
Will there be any marketing? Uh, I may have missed that, uh, as far as, uh-
Marketing as far as, uh, the, the realty markets?
What's been offered here in our county?
Yeah, actually, our, our idea is that we use Nancy Ward, who's a local realtor, for, um, for showing the lots here, but we also have her partner, if she's here, she's here and she's getting, uh, something she hasn't heard before. Um, but we're also planning on using, um, top-notch realtors in both the Houston and the, and the Dallas areas, uh, to actually-
Marketing and promoting.
So rather than just sitting here and waiting for people from Dallas and Houston to find us, let's go find-
All right. I, I've, I've heard what, uh, I had six of my break and, uh, I'm in, I'm in support of it, uh, and the city, uh, doing what we can within our means to support the project. But as far as the turnaround benefit for the city, uh, that was, uh, one of my concerns, that's why I asked the question. Uh, there's a, a migration right now that's happening. Uh, I'm told, uh, people are moving from west, out in the California area, back this way. And, uh, if that be the case, then they're looking for places, they're coming out of a, a high, uh, property market, uh, environment and they have, uh, the means and the wherewithal to, and certainly, being a retirement community, as far as, uh, my estimation, uh, we could use, uh, some help in our tax base. And, uh, so I think that it would be a, a good thing for our community.
Could we do like a percentage of deal, like when it's this complete, we do this, this complete, we do this, you know?
Like a breakdown, at least.
Like if it's, if it's, okay, fifty percent, you know, we, we punch in this amount of money and when it's, gets a hundred percent, we punch in this amount of money. So is that possible to look at or let y'all?
Sure.
You know, let y'all get together and work on, cause I would really love to see this. This, I think this would be a really good deal for Crockett, Texas.
You know, one of the advantages of retirement communities, where you're not adding any load to your school system.
Yeah.
You're getting a lot of tax things, but you're not adding any load to the school district itself.
Right.
That's another advantage to go in.
Yeah.
Not that we want retired community, that's not what we're trying to do, but drawing those people in is a good thing. Um, you gain twice as far as the taxes, could you get the taxes, but you're not-
Right.
Having to spend it in the school district, so.
Yeah, like again, like John was saying.
I mean, this is just discussion tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I, I know there's no motion to be made or nothing, but I would like for you and him to continue-
The dialogue.
And, and get back with us on more and, yes, I'm-
I agree.
I'm fully-
Yeah.
On board with this.
And just, yeah, and fully kinda showing how the city is gonna eventually have to address that-
Yes.
That water and sewers.
What we were, what we were looking at here, um, uh, we have water up to consolidated water. We have water supply and it stops right here. We have water on this side, down ni- or up nineteen and two eighty-seven on this side. So we would have to bore it, cause right now this is a dead end, over here is a dead end. We have no circulating loop. This provides us the ability to tie in our system using that right-of-way. Now our system is looped from both directions, so it, it, it improves our pressure planes, it pr- improves the development ability of that entire loop now. So not only is it, you know, for the public benefit of just this residential subdivision, it's for the improvement of the, uh, of the, uh, development of that entire side of the loop, uh, to have access to water and sewer now.
On the sewer also, the same thing applies. You don't have to loop sewer, obviously, like you do water, but this, this allows you to provide for sewer access back to this two hundred and twenty-five acre. If he ever decides he wants to sell it or develop it, it gives you access to developing that. And there are another, what, hundred or so acres on this side, and it also gives you access to developing that. So, so neither, this is not just about what's happening on this seventy-nine acres, there's-
Yes, what could happen on the backside.
Yeah, we can run, we can run water and sewer both to these other properties from, from inside.
That's what I'm just looking for. I'm needing council's nod of, for us to move forward, it's gonna require ordinance amendments, uh, as well as allocation of funding and what that number's gonna be that we'll have to bring back to council.
I say move forward.
I voice the same sentiment.
Shut up.
We, we have a designation of Crockett as being, uh, Houston County, uh, being, uh, what do you call it, designated as-
Sounds good.
Help me out here.
Talking about paradise?
Well, it already is.
Economically deprived.
Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Economically deprived. Well, that concludes, can we, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion with adjourn.
All right.
You, uh, I was, I was thinking about you. I said, I was thinking about you in custom home building, the work that you do and the quality. Yeah?
My only problem, now I'm mentioning the other thing about putting in the subgrids and I was telling you that not really a good thing.
Well-
Do what?
And I'm local.
What happened? I didn't, I didn't hear you.